Hello, Joe.
Hello, Alderman Budmats. Where are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Muckadoki.
We still have quite a few folks coming in from the waiting room and about another minute before 7:30. I'm gonna give it about thirty more seconds just to make sure that we don't have anyone straggling here right before I call the meeting in order. Here we go. Two more coming in. Well, I have 7:31 on my clock, so why don't we go ahead and call this last meeting of the city council to order for this year. Like I said, it is 7:31 on December 15th. I'd ask that you all please stay on mute, but join me for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then if the members of the council could take a moment to unmute while the clerk calls roll. With that, would the clerk please call roll?
Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano. Is she here tonight?
She should be. I didn't hear otherwise. I'm looking down the list now.
Yeah, I don't see her.
Got three others joining right now, but they're not Alderman Beniziano. Continue with the roll and let's see if it's a moment for her to come in.
Okay, Bessassi.
Here.
Yes, this.
Present.
Sanica.
Here.
And did she come in?
Well, she has not.
Okay.
Well, that makes five present and one absent. It still leaves us with a quorum this evening. Members of the audience here are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for future and current broadcasts over the city's television channel as well as other media outlets. Couple of ground rules and items of housekeeping to go over as we've been doing this for a number of meetings now since March. But public comment will still be afforded to the members of the public who are joining us on this conference line. So long as you provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you'd like to speak about this evening before the deadline, which is noted on this evening's agenda. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers listening to this meeting, you'll also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting. Primarily, members of the public must have signed in before the start of this meeting, which was 7:31. And as always, any written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will also be read aloud. I guess moving on here, and we'll still wait to see if Alderman Beniziano does join. But the first order of business is to approve minutes from the previous meeting. And at this time, there are two sets of minutes for the council to approve. And the first set is from November 24th, 2020. It's a city council meeting. With that, is there a motion by show of hand to approve the minutes? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Diastis for the second. With that, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Alderman Beniziano is joining at this time. So if there are any corrections, additions, or deletions for these minutes, please raise your hand. Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. This brings us to the next set of minutes, which is from December 1st, 2020. It's also another city council meeting. By show of hand, is there a motion to approve these minutes? Thank you, Alderman Bessassi, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. With this set of minutes from December 1st, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved as well. Now, at this time, we don't have a reason to deviate from this evening's agenda. And for the mayor's report, I just wanted to bring up one topic which was brought to many members of the council about two weeks ago now regarding some business establishments that also have video gaming in regard to the video gaming renewal license. I want to mention that the appropriate time to actually discuss this will be later on in the agenda under line item D. But at this time, I wanted to provide a quick report that I received from the city manager just to share at this time and talk about one important area to look at. And I think we need to obviously wait for the remainder of the data to come in from this year before we make any real decisions. But if I can draw your attention on this report, it's from the Illinois Gaming Board, and it covers January to November of 2020. And the column under VGT income, video gaming terminal income, if you look at the column that says net terminal income, this is the net income that the establishments have received in this period of time. And that does include the times of the months in which operations were suspended, namely, the March 16th to June 30th, and then the November 19th until present. And as you can see in some of these, for example, the second one down, they still netted $489,386. So I do want to have a healthy conversation about what we do with the video gaming license renewal and the date. But I really don't want to talk too much about anything beyond the date for the renewal at this time. Of course, welcome to bring up ideas, suggestions, and opportunities. But I think it's important that we do have the full data covering January to December when we discuss this in the new year. So with that, I just wanted to share this bit of information, and then we'll reconvene on it on line item D. Now, are there any other ward reports this evening? Alderman Sanica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to state that I had received calls from two residents, or I'm sorry, one call from one resident and then a written letter. The written letter I forwarded to the Economic Development Committee, specifically to Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Beniziano, because the letter was regarding the residents' desires for certain investments that they would like to see for the city of Rolling Meadows. So I'm stating in the ward report that that was received and forwarded to various parties in the city for review and consideration. And then the second call was regarding adjudication fine, which I have brought up with the Public Works Director, Rob Horn, and that is currently in flight. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Alderman Sanica. I see Alderman Bessassi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, just one thing. Currently, the survey that's out there regarding the chipper service has one question at the, at the end of it regarding the garbage trucks. And I just want to let people know that all that question is, is to find out if residents would like us to pursue looking at ways to have, allow garbage cans and potentially retrofit our trucks. And if they would be willing to pay a little extra for being able to do that. It has nothing to do with privatizing the garbage. So I say it again, it has nothing to do with privatizing the garbage. I have gotten some communications where people have thought that's what it was. So once again, it has nothing to do with privatizing the garbage. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessassi. I received those calls as well, and I saw some chatter that really went down a rabbit hole with that question. Again, you know, you had brought that line item up for me on there, and it's my hope that the efficiencies those canisters create that will cover any additional costs associated with the canisters. So I would really like residents, like you said, don't read too much into that question, just see if it's a yes or no as far as a canister goes. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for my tardiness. So I did receive that letter from Alderman Sanica, which I will address on matters not on the agenda, since that's when we normally give the EDC kind of update. So that's when I will address that. But I also wanted to update that I did get an email from a resident in the fourth ward about some ice on sidewalks. And so I did follow up with Director Horn on that, and he is following up with the resident, but wanted to reiterate that ice on sidewalks are residents' responsibility if they want to lay down salt. Otherwise, it's one of those walk at your own risk. You know, that it's not Public Works' responsibility to clear the ice and/or salt. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Appreciate that and appreciate you asking for forgiveness on the tardiness. It's quite all right. Are there any other ward reports this evening? If not, there are also no signatures on the sign-in sheet for public comment. So we will not open up the floor for public comments over the next twenty minutes. Instead, we will move on to the next section of tonight's agenda, which are the items pending. And the first item pending is ordinance number 20-54, which is approving an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion by show of hand to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Sanica. And thank you for the second, Alderman Beniziano. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? And with that, will the clerk please call roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
That makes six in favor and none opposed, so this ordinance is adopted. This brings us down to line item B, ordinance number 20-55, and that's to authorize a special use for video gaming cafe in variation from section 122-29D3 of the city code, allowing refuse disposal areas that are not screened in on all sides for the property located at 2164 Plum Grove Road, which is Shelby's and Plum Grove Shopping Center. By show of hand, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastis, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this? Alderman Diastis, I saw your hand first, and then we'll go Alderman Budmats after that.
No, I have nothing else. Just trying to take it down.
Okay, Alderman Budmats, then your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have to say, I met with Charity Johns, and she's a very nice person to talk with, and she has a great business model. But she was unrepentant and honest about the fact that her business is gaming and gambling. It's not about food or liquor or anything else. It's about getting people to come to her establishment to gamble. And so other than the tax revenues that are generated by this business, it really brings no value to our community. And so based on feedback that I've received from residents, I will probably be taking an unpopular position, but I'll be voting against, against this item. It just, I don't see that, and my residents don't see that it brings anything positive to the community. It's just a way of people throwing their dollars away. And so I'll be voting against it and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Budmats.
Roll.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us down to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent ordinances in for first reading. Tonight, it consists of two items, items C and D. However, I am going to be pulling item D because staff is requesting a waiver of the first reading, and there's additional conversation that I believe should be had. So at that point, I'll take each of these individually with the council. So is there a motion to consider the first ordinance for first reading? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you for the second, Alderman Budmats, and that's ordinance number 21-00 at this time to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call roll?
Bessassi.
Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. Now, moving on, like I mentioned, staff is asking for a waiver of the first reading for item D, so the ordinance can be approved immediately. Is there an Alderman willing to make the motion to waive the first reading of this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Bessassi, and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion to, on the motion to waive the first reading? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for a final approval? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, this does move on, or this ordinance moves forward for final approval. So now that brings it back to the ordinance number 20-56, amending the liquor license following the passage and completion of ordinance number 2031 as approved on August 11th, 2020 pertaining to alcohol beverages. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Diastis, and thank you for the second, Alderman Bessassi. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with the help of Attorney Wolf, we were able to prepare some information for council tonight. Due to the fact that the gaming terminals have been shut down because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the gaming establishments that fall under this new GA and GC license have been unable to operate, I moved to amend the ordinance to add a provision that authorizes the extension of the due date for the 2021 annual license fee for the video gaming terminals and terminal operators to June of 2021.
Okay, so your motion is to amend, amend this with that provision authorizing the extension of the due date for the 2021 annual license fee for video gaming terminals and terminal operators to June of 2021. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, is there a second to Alderman Beniziano's motion to amend? Are these hands for seconds or for comment? Second, okay, so thank you, Alderman Bessassi, for this second. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in support of this. I do understand, and I think we can do, I know we've looked at different incentives and things like that, and I think this one would be okay. I guess my only question is then, is our expectation then in June, like, so for next year, they'd be paying the city $10,000 to $12,000, depending on if they have five or six machines. So they'd, they'd still be doing it, because I know there's all separate agreements, and that's a discussion for January, as you staged our call for us today, rightfully so. But I guess that's my larger question. So rather than get portion of the money this year and portion of it like their 2021 dues, next year, they'll be having to come up with 10,000 to 12,000. I know we looked at the financials, and everybody seems to be operating in a very financially sound perspective. But I just want to clarify that it'll really be 10,000 to 12,000 that's due next year versus just the five to six. It would be a double payment then for these entities. I just want to clarify that that's correct.
Okay, and so Attorney Wolf, do you want to take a stab at the clarification for that for Alderman O'Brien? Or Manager Crumstock?
Not sure who will field that. So, and Manager Crumstock can, you know, help me with this too. But it's my understanding that the annual license fees for these terminals occur in the beginning of the year for that year going forward. So 2020 has already been paid by these establishments. And the fee for 2021 is due in January of 2021. So what the council is considering right now is extending the, the annual license fee to June of 2021 instead of requiring that it be paid right now. Whether that's a prorated amount for the year or a full amount is, is really not being determined at this time.
So just for clarification, so again, typically what would happen is December 2020, folks are paying, so January 1st, they have their new 2021 license. So this amendment and the ordinance actually would state that now we would issue their 2021 license, but they would have up to June to pay for all those items.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Attorney Wolf, and Manager Crumstock. That helps. That's the only question I have. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, help me understand. So we have video gaming terminals who are according to the piece of paper that you showed us earlier, making in some cases hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we're offering them a deferral. What are we doing for the other people who have liquor licenses? Are they getting a deferral until June as well, or is it just this special class of people who are already making a ton of money off of it?
So what I wanted to do was allow the council to have their conversations first and share that same sentiment in the fact that this is a minority group of establishments that, that deal with food, beverage, and entertainment. And I do feel like that it is, you know, kind of fixing one small portion of the problem for any of those establishments that do not have video gaming, that are also going through similar hardship. And so for me, I would like to, in the time between now and, of course, June, if this amendment goes through, identify another avenue to go where maybe there's a reduction in the liquor license, and there is no reduction in the actual fees paid for the gaming license. Because as you can see, and I can't make this decision now without the data available, but as you can see, the data that we do have from January to November still shows very healthy numbers. In one instance, it's almost a half a million dollars, and even on the lowest end, it's still $106,000. And, you know, I don't want to make decisions about offering a break to this small group of people without being able to help a larger audience that are in similar hardship. So I hope this will just buy necessary time with these folks who are requesting that they have a deferral timeframe right now in terms of paying for this license, and then actually looking at a situation that will solve the hardship for a broader audience with the city manager and the finance director.
And then one other question. Can we, can we follow the example of our friends at the Cook County Assessor, excuse me, Treasurer's Office, and, and say that the license is still due, but that they can, they can avoid penalties for the late payment until June the 1st, or whatever date it is that we're going to set? Because quite honestly, the, the, our property taxes are being pushed back, the due date for, is being pushed back. But really, it's not being pushed back. It's just the date of penalty is being pushed back. So by doing so, all of these funds are still due and payable, and we won't have anybody who goes out of business in June and gets six extra months of free license. They'll still owe that money to the city. So I would like to suggest that rather than, rather than push the due date back, that we push the date of penalty being enforced back to those, to that six-month period.
That, that is a, a good approach, and it shares continuity with the county. Manager Crumstock, can you help me understand, because I don't recall offhand, but what the penalty scale is or rates are for delinquent payments, or if we have any such thing?
So typically, what would happen is after the first month of delinquency, we send them a courtesy letter notifying them that they're, so food and beverage, that their food and beverage is actually late. Then we send them another courtesy letter 15 to 30 days after that, and then we would bring them to adjudication first and foremost. Typically, most people, after they get a letter, they're calling for a payment plan. It's when we bring them into adjudication that we do assess any late fees, penalties, and any of those kind of things that we ask directly through the adjudication.
So unlike property taxes, there isn't an escalation percentage that gets tacked on for the, the frequency of how tardy the payment is.
Not, not at this time.
Okay. How would it work operationally? Let's say if we were to go down this hypothetical where they would receive a license without having to pay, so they're in good standing with the physical license on their establishment, but not having to pay until June. Is that something that's possible operationally, administratively?
Operation, yes, because you as the liquor license commissioner obviously could tell us to do that. We would monitor it, and then during those next six months, and it just says, by June, that they would have to pay, this would allow us to have that whole operator discussion and who's paying what, but also have some of those other discussions that Alderman Budmats talked about, liquor overall. But we would monitor that, and we would actually know. And there are certain businesses that obviously would be paying straightforward and then dealing with their operators differently.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I know I could, as a liquor commissioner, do that. What I'm saying is, in terms of staff and resources and ability to track it without creating more problems than necessary. Is it possible?
Yeah, because the few that we have, it's no problem at this point.
Okay. Then Alderman Budmats?
Do you want to? Thank you.
Okay, so do you, I mean, do you want to try and push for that as a motion? Or do you want to continue with the motion that's currently on the floor, as Alderman Veneziano has it?
No, I mean, if we have no, if we have no fines scheduled already, then I guess there's really, we have no teeth anyway. So other than bringing them into adjudication, and then it takes months for the teeth to come into play. So, but I, I have, I have a problem with offering one very small segment of people a six-month delay in their license, especially when they are, I will just say it, they are a beneficiary. I, I think there are probably restaurants that are hurting much worse than what those numbers that I saw bear out, and we've done nothing for those people by comparison. So I have, I have a real hard time voting yes for this, for this one special group of 10 people, or eight people, however many it is, and, and saying, yeah, you guys can wait six months while everybody else, you know, pay up now. It, it seems incredibly unfair to the rest of the businesses in town to shoulder the burden for these 10 businesses.
I agree with you on that, and maybe this does create opportunity to go back and, and look at this, this small group of, of establishments in our community that do make good profit margins and have a little bit more strict or create greater penalties on deadlines. So that way, we can eventually have teeth in this a lot earlier than just through adjudication hearings or something like that. So it's still a good opportunity, I think, for us to do something about that in these next six months potentially. But you are, you are right, and it is only helping a small group of establishments out of a larger group that are enduring greater hardship than some of these.
So the question is, are we, are, these are the only liquor licenses that we're pushing back then six months?
No. Yeah, go ahead, Attorney Wolf.
To offer a point of clarification, this is, this is the video gaming terminal license that's separate from the liquor license. So the motion to amend the ordinance that's on, that's being discussed right now is a discussion regarding extending the deadline for the annual license fee for the video gaming terminals, not the liquor license. So that's all it is. So the liquor license that's applicable to those establishments that have video gaming, that their license fee with respect to the liquor license is not being altered by this. What, what is being extended is only the annual license for the video gaming terminal.
But the only thing, clarification on that is, that's for the GAs. The gaming accessories do have their own liquor license, A1, A2, A3, whatever it may be. It's the gaming cafes that that's the only license that they get from the city.
And so while the conversation is on the, the license for the gaming, right now, Manager Crumstock and I are having conversations to figure out what we can do for the larger audience of businesses that have liquor licenses and that specialize in food, beverage, and entertainment to help that group out. But again, the conversation here is on the gaming license.
And that would be the gaming cafe license based on what, what I was just told? So it's only for those establishments that are really raking it in, the, the, the gaming cafes that we're making this special, this special accommodation for, correct?
No, Alderman Budmats, so the gaming cafe will still pay for their gaming cafe, which is their liquor license. They, in addition, all establishments that have video gaming terminals pay an annual terminal license. So to actually have the terminals i- in the establishment. So that is the license that we're talking about right now that has the extension.
And there's one more. There's the terminals, so if you have five terminals, six, six terminals, that would be $5,000 or $6,000. It's a thousand dollars a terminal, and then there's a thousand dollars for the terminal operator part of this. So there's really three licenses that come out of video gaming, gaming overall, when you look at it that way. I hope I didn't get you confused, Alderman Budmats.
Yeah, so the, the gaming cafe liquor license, the GC license, is not being impacted by this extension. It's the video gaming terminal license.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman Veneziano, then Diasis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to add a little bit more contents, talk, contents to this. Working with Attorney Wolf, by delaying the due date to June, this would also give Attorney Wolf and staff the opportunity to evaluate our ordinance. The gaming board changed some regulations in the fact that gaming operator terminal owners are not allowed to pay these fees for our businesses, because it's considered a kickback. And there may be a way for our ordinance to state with different verbiage that we would need to include for the terminal operators to be included in this. So by extending it to June, we could have that opportunity to make these changes properly, if possible, and, and get the ordinance stated correctly by pushing the, the payment due date to June as well.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Anything further on that? Nope. Alderman Diasis?
Thank you. I just need to, I have a question of clarification that I think maybe Ms. Wolf could help me with. The mayor put up a spreadsheet that showed the amount bet, the amount won, and then the difference. Is the difference the amount that the operator gets, or do they only get a portion of that?
So this Manager Crumstock can help weigh in. So with contractual obligations, the city is not privileged to see that information. Bear with me while I increase the font, so you can see that. Manager Crumstock, if you want to walk Alderman Diasis through the net terminal income and talk about the contractual obligations between, let's say, and I'm just not picking on any one establishment, but for example, reps placed and their, their terminal operator and the $110,000 line for the net terminal income.
Thank you, Mayor, and obviously what's being highlighted, obviously, Alderman Diasis, if you look at what's called VGT income, that's where Mayor Gale is talking about net income. So typically, that number that you see, that $110,000, or excuse me, $110,000, you would subtract the VGT tax distribution from that. That's what you're going to make as your revenue to that establishment. Now, each of the businesses have a relationship with a terminal business. Now, we don't know if it's 50/50 share, if it's a 60/40, if it's a 70/30, but that's what they're actually sharing for. So as the mayor mentioned before, the committee that is over $400,000, you subtract that over $100,000, you know, you're looking at a sharing about $300,000. So let's say hypothetically that it was a 50/50 share, they made $150,000 at that point. But it's a business transaction, so we don't know. We can always ask, and you can always say no. But we don't know, when you take that net income minus the tax, that's what their share is. So even if at 110 minus the 36, if you were roughly doing, and again, we're saying, let's say, even if you're sharing and you made $30,000, you know, that's still $30,000 with all the other pieces. But that's what you have to look with, and the bottom one, that $40,000 minus the 13, so there you're looking at, you know, $27,000. So second, that's Bigsby, so Bigsby and Gold Rush, what is their percentage that they share? So that's what the mayor is mentioning, and that's the real number that Alderman Budmats is talking about. And I get it, for gaming accessory, this is supposed to help them, but everybody has different relationships. And in the city of Rolling Meadows, the terminal operator businesses that are in here, obviously you have IGS, Awesome Hands, Laurel Entertainment, Gold Rush, they all have different relationships, they all have different contracts, and that's the money that they're sharing between that net terminal income minus the tax that is separated between the state and the city. I hope that clarifies how the math is done.
Well, okay, so. So just, on, on, on the last one, for example, I see 13, 5, 52 net terminal tax. That's the, the addition of the, the state share and the municipality share.
That is correct.
Okay, and that comes out of the 40,000. What, like you said, leaving about 27,000, and that's divided between the operator and the terminal person, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so now I have a better understanding of, of what it is. Okay, that, that was my clarification question. Thank you.
Thank you. Then with that, are there any other items for discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, then the question is, shall this amendment be added to this, excuse me, shall this amendment to the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunaika?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diasis?
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, this amendment is approved. And so that circles us back now to the main motion to approve the ordinance now as amended. Is there any discussion on this ordinance now as amended? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sunaika?
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, this ordinance is approved. Now, that brings us on to new business, and that new business is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for December 15th, 2020. Is there, by show of hand, a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion on the bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sunaika?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, the warrant is approved. This now brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent resolutions. And this consists of five items, items F through J. Does any alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider those five resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Diasis. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. We'll start with line item F, which is resolution number two zero dash R dash 112, and that's to award a one-year contract extension for landscape services downtown Kirchoff Road and other old city-owned sites. Line item G, resolution number two zero dash R dash 113, is to authorize the purchase of the city's fuel from Relidine for the remainder of fiscal year 2020 and through December of 2021. Next, resolution number two zero dash R dash 114 is to authorize the purchase of water meters for replacement, repairs, and new construction for fiscal year 2021. Resolution number two zero dash R dash 115 is to award a contract for traffic signal maintenance for 2021. And then line item J, which is resolution number two zero dash R dash 116, is to award a contract to the Seorba Group, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $99,332.50 for the Sunset Drive Brookview Lane Sanitary Sewer Project Design Engineering Services. The question is, shall the five resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yep.
Diasis?
Yes.
Sunaika?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor and then opposed, those resolutions are adopted. Now, this brings us on to other business and reports. The first item of other business in the report section are the mayor's appointments. I do have an appointment this evening for the first ward. It is, the individual's name is Karen McHale. You should have all seen in the packet that there was an update on Karen in the sense that she lives in Plum Grove Creek subdivision in Rolling Meadows since 2017. She's been involved in her church for a number of years, teaching youth faith classes as a catechist, and she belongs to Holy Family Church. She is currently the president of her neighborhood association, and she's been so since 2018. And I would like for your support in appointing her as the interim first ward alderman at this time. So with that, for a motion to approve the appointment, is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sunaika. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Is there any discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time here. And I do just want to say, clearly, I know we're all here representing, I'm speaking on behalf of the third ward, and one of the main principles that I ran on was for collaboration. And I thought that many of my peers were that same way because of, that we were all concerned is that the council had been too contentious over the last several years. So I hold the trust that the third ward placed the meeting to represent them with the utmost respect and do not take that responsibility lightly. As I did prepare for the meeting, I mean, reading over the packets, I looked forward to talking to the appointee and also my supporting vote for that as well. Look forward to a brief conversation with her, an email exchange I've done with past appointees as well, if I hadn't known them through other community events or other engagements as well, being that foundation of collaboration that I try to honor as I joined the council about two years ago. I do have to say, I was disappointed that when I was asked for the candidate's contact information, I was informed that we would not be allowed to do that in this time for a reason, as you had stated in your email back to the council. So I just was a little disappointed by that. The fact that we weren't given the opportunity for that through no fault of her own is just not sitting right with me for that context and foundation of collaboration that I'm trying to bring. While it's clearly nothing against the candidate, by not having allowed us to have the affordability to contact her and talk with her for a brief chat, I do feel I'd be doing a disservice to the third ward when I try and bring collaboration. So for that reason, I'd like to make a motion just that we could postpone this until our first January meeting. It's still within the 30-day window of a vacancy appointment, as you noted, and that we are allowed to contact the candidate for this, which I think would demonstrate which I think would demonstrate the collaboration that as a council, we should be having. I'd be game for a special meeting later this week or next week, if we could have the opportunity to chat with her and get it done faster for you, Mr. Mayor. As I said, I anticipated the yes vote going into this, but I know with the holidays and things like that, I don't want to put anybody out. So should the appointment go forward tonight, I'm fully supportive. I'll be glad to call Mrs. McHale tomorrow and welcome to her because I'm always for a fresh perspective, which is always great to the council. I was just a little disappointed that from my, the foundation of why I ran for less contention between the council was not able to be upheld.
Okay, thank you. And so we'll look for a second for that. Now, I do, I do want to make it clear to you because I do believe you're leaving some things out. And the first thing is that this is the mayor's appointment. There is nowhere in the sense that council members have to conduct interviews with the appointee. That's a courtesy. When I extended that courtesy for Alderman Veneziano, it was met with a delegit, 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 delegitimized her residency here. And it started off on a very acoustic level, and I'm not going to have another individual welcomed in that manner. So with this, the appointment process is for the council to vote in the mayor's discretion to bring forth a candidate who will objectively serve the residents. The appointment process is not for the council members to sit down and interview them and make that choice. None of us had any, any opportunity to interview one another before you got the seat here. The mayor brought forth a candidate, and you can vote on the mayor's discretion of bringing forth the appropriate candidate. Now, had things gone differently with the fourth ward appointment, I would have no problem sharing the information, but unfortunately, I cannot do it selectively and hand you over the information and withhold it from somebody else who might do something out of poor taste. And so that's the reason that information wasn't shared, and it's not an obligation to share that information. Your obligation is to either vote yes or no on the candidate the mayor brings forth.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I didn't want to put words into your war or reference your email, so I appreciate you filling in that context, and I totally understand.
And so now, do we have a person who's willing to make a second for Alderman Diastis's postponing? Sorry, see Alderman Diastis's hand up for Alderman O'Brien's postponing. Alderman Diastis, is that your hand for the second?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and in this matter, the corporate authorities does include the mayor in this call. So with that, is there any discussion on postponing this? Alderman Sonoika.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think that it would be irresponsible of us as a council to not allow for the first ward to be represented in the absence of Alderman Cannon's resignation. There's an election in April, and I think that it's best if the first ward has someone sooner rather than later to address issues going forward. And then in April, another alderman, perhaps the same as the appointment or a different one, will be voted by the residents of the first ward. So I will be voting against postponing this appointment today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sonoika. Any further discussion? Alderman Visasi.
Yes, I understand both sides of this argument. I will probably be voting for the postponement for all the reasons that Alderman O'Brien has mentioned. And I don't believe that waiting until the first week of January is going to damage the first ward. So what I would like to see is be able to communicate in any way to her. I don't care if my, if any questions are filtered, I just would like to have even, you know, have some idea of who the person is. I do with respect, understand that you vetted her, and I trust your judgment. I just feel that, just as Alderman O'Brien does, that I have a responsibility to make sure that, you know, I'm not approving. Because our, what we're supposed to be doing is is actually approving this, otherwise it would just be an appointment.
Which is what it is.
Why would we, why would we even have to vote?
Because it's in our ordinance for the council to vote. Now, this isn't a discussion right now, it's just a vote yes or no. Should you approve this candidate this evening, you will have her contact information after that because she will be appointed to the committee on the council here. Now, thank you for sharing your position. I'm going to move on to Alderman Veneziano, then Budmats, and then we're going to call roll on this motion that's on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if this motion to postpone is passed, is the intention of you, Mr. Mayor, to share the contact information?
No, absolutely not. The contact information is going to be shared after the appointment is made. Now, the council members can either approve or deny the candidate that I brought forth to appoint. If this individual is appointed and it goes through, everybody is welcome to their information. I am not interested in having any games played where we're going to try and delegitimize an individual before they even step foot on here. We are all neighbors, trying to volunteer our time, and they don't need to be met with such disrespectful behavior. And so at this time, we have a motion on the floor. I'm not going to hold information back, but I'm not providing it until after this vote is cast.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's, for me, there's no reason to postpone because nothing's going to change. And I do respect your decision because I will be very honest, since I feel like I'm kind of at the center of this reason for, you know, holding up the information. My entering into the council prior to my appointment was made with hostility from some council members, and it was not a pleasant experience. You know, so I do respect your decision in that, so I will be voting against the postponement.
Thank you. Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recall in the past that, that we didn't, we didn't talk about candidates and discuss these things. We either, we just voted on yes or no. We had a reason to vote no, we voted no, but there was not discussion on the merits of a, of an appointee in, in, in open discussion. And I think this, the majority of this conversation has been inappropriate and is disrespectful of the process. So I will be voting not to postpone. We move ahead with this, with this appointment, just as we would any other appointment for any other committee or commission. And quite honestly, it, the whole process has been disappointing. We have a unique opportunity here for the voters on the first ward to actually get like a, I know this sounds crude, but a three-month test drive where you get to watch a potential alderman in action and then get to vote on, on her reelection or not if other candidates are running. But I guess the point is, is that it's a very short-term appointment. And so we're at a two-year appointment, I might have more concern, but we're talking about a three to a four-month appointment. And so I'll, I'll be voting against extending on this, and I will be voting in favor of making the appointment without question because that's the way appointments should be made. We should not drag people through a wringer for this kind of a situation, and it's disappointing that it happens. That's the end of my comments, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. I am extremely disappointed in the way this subject is digressing. The appointment and the process is for the mayor to bring forth a candidate and for the council to either vote on the candidate based on the discretion of a mayor bringing forth a worthy candidate. It's not, and it doesn't say in the statutes or in our current ordinances that the council is required or obligated to interview the individual beforehand. That is not the process. And when I extended the courtesy before that, it turned into trouble. And I'm not interested in turning things into trouble for another resident who wants to volunteer their time. Alderman Budmats, I'm going to lower your hand. And Alderman O'Brien, this is your last bite at the apple since you made this motion.
Yep, absolutely, I do just want, I did not mean any disrespect from that. I was not trying to interview, I'm not privy to the additional information that just came out here, but plus on your email about the potential contention in the past, I didn't know the details of that. All I wanted to do was call and say hi, talk to her. I went, my mom taught in the public or the schools for a while, and the church is involved. I just, so I honestly don't mean any disrespect to anybody. I was just caught off guard that we weren't able to connect with a potential somebody we'd be working with that I look forward to working with. So I do apologize to the group and certainly to the appointee. I was just looking for a five-minute thing to shoot an email or to chat on the phone, just to say hi. Look forward to working with you, so I do apologize for if anything came across disrespectful.
Had you just left it alone and voted yes, you would have had the opportunity to make that call and introduce yourself. But now I'm going to ask that we call the vote on this motion to postpone. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Visasi.
No.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sonoika.
No.
Budmats.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
No.
With two in favor and four opposed, the motion to postpone does not carry. And at this time, if there's no further discussion, I would like for the clerk to call roll on appointing Karen McHale to the first ward. Will the clerk please call roll?
Diastis.
No.
Sonoika.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
No.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Visasi.
No.
And you do have to call me as a corporate authority.
I was just going to say Mayor Gallo.
And I vote yes on this. So this, this appointment carries as a four to three. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for welcoming Karen in this way. Let's move on now, since there's no mayor's proclamations, is there anything for the city clerk to report?
I don't have a report tonight, but I do want to, I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season.
Thank you, you as well. Be safe and find the joy and jolly in these holidays if you can.
You too.
Then moving on from there, we do have city staff reports. Let's start with the community items of interest.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Live from City Hall, we do have two other items to add to items of topics to mention tonight. We really do want to thank everybody who participated in this year's United States Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Todd program, sponsored here in the City Hall. Obviously, it was one of the best years that we had for collections. The Marine Corps was back three times, and the last time that they actually came, the finance conference room was about half full on the table and everything. We do really appreciate all that, all the residents did. We also want to thank everybody who participated in the Police Department food drive that was conducted on Saturday, December fifth. The Police Department was able to fill the Palatine Township truck. It's about the same size as the midsize U-Haul that we've used in the past, and a few squad vehicles. All the money, or all the money that was collected too also went to the donation to the Palatine Township. We really do want to appreciate and thank school health, who actually had volunteers pretty much the whole day at one of the entrances. But Palatine Township, who was there, they had a few reps. The Rolling Meadows Crime Stoppers, the Community Event Foundation volunteers, the Islamic Society Northwest Suburbs, Jewel, U-Haul, and obviously the Police Department. We also do want to thank Alderman O'Brien, who spent the whole day and actually helped out the volunteers and actually fed the volunteers a little bit. We do appreciate Alderman Viziano and Mayor Gallo for also showing up during this event. It was actually one of the best collections that we had, and we really do appreciate all the residents who donated to the Police Department food drive. We do want to mention that the city in Vitalem has scheduled another blood drive for Wednesday, December twenty-third, from one PM to seven PM in City Hall and the council chambers. There really still is a need for blood. There's limited areas, as many people know, because many times schools have been used in other locations, businesses, and they're not as active this year. So that's why we really appreciate everybody who's given in our past ones and this current one that's coming up. But due to the need for social distancing, appointments are really needed. They will only let in walk-ins if there's space available and they can make sure the social distancing is actually being followed. If you'd like to schedule an appointment, please contact Vitalem at eight seven seven two five eight four eight two five. And again, we do want to stress, wearing of a face covering, a mask really is required for this. And we do want to mention again, it's an opportunity for residents or friends of Rolling Meadows or anybody who would like to give blood. And it really is a wonderful gift and a gift of life during this holiday season. We do want to mention that the city Swank and Elgin Recycling are conducting a holiday light recycling program. The two collection boxes are here at City Hall. Items that are accepted are mini lights, Italian lights, C-seven lights, C-nine lights, robe lights, any kinds of colors or lengths are accepted. This program actually goes through February twelfth, twenty twenty-one. We do want to mention to folks who visit the Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website. And again, you can either go to the city website at WWCityRM.org, click on the RM Business Buzz link, or you can go directly to WWRMBusinessBuzz.org. This RM Business Buzz is an economic development initiative funded and maintained by the city of Rolling Meadows, and we proudly support all of our local businesses. We do want to mention that the fire department keep the wreath red displays around both fire stations. This is a program to keep public awareness initiatives and encourages residents to protect their families by preventing fires caused by seasonal decorations. The wreaths that are hanging at the fire stations begin the season illuminated with red bulbs. Any fire that is attributed back to a holiday decoration goes on as a white bulb. If you'd like more information about this holiday fire safety item, please call the fire department at eight four seven three nine seven thirty-three fifty-two. We do want to mention that the December e-news and views can be found on the city website. In this electronic issue, some of the items mentioned are the elections of Ward one, two, four, and six. And again, submissions for those are all the way up until five PM on a December twenty-first. We do want to mention again in that e-news and views, the December twenty-third blood drive, the holiday refuse collection, please be aware of what's coming up. And we do talk about the business buzz. But we also want to make sure that people know about the revised zoning code that was passed, the ten to twenty twenty-one community event schedule. And then we do mention the December twenty twenty calendar, and this is also another good reason for you to look at the schedule for refuse. And then we do have about our handyman program, and then there's a short burb about snow removal, frequently asked questions. We do want to mention that City Hall and Public Works will be closed on Thursday, December twenty-fourth and Friday, December twenty-fifth, in observance of the holiday season. On Thursday, December twenty-fourth, garbage and recycling will be collected early. Please have your refuse and recycling out to the curb no later than six AM. For Friday collection, this will happen on Saturday. The City Hall and Public Works will be closed on Friday, January first, in observance of the New Year. Refuse and recycling collection will be delayed one day for Friday collection only. This will happen on Saturday. We do want to mention that Public Works will provide Christmas tree pickup service to all refuse customers, really starting from January second, and it's actually going to go a little bit longer too, about January fifteenth. Residents should remove light stencils and ornaments and place trees at the curb, the cut side facing the street, under regular refuse collection day. We do want to mention, please shop, dine, order in Rolling Meadows. It's even more important than ever during these times is a significant to remember big boxes, restaurants, and small businesses. We also want to mention, because it's been coming up a little bit more now, obviously due to seasons, due to more people at home, does your water usage seem higher than average? We would tell people, go to our website, and you know, there's information there too. But the city's utility billing software is billing water out accurately. There are several reasons why residents may see that their water usage is higher than average. There are customers who have not made payments or are behind on their payments to the city. At this time, as has been discussed earlier, the city is waiving late fees and not performing water shut-offs or, and we are helping residents due to COVID-nineteen pandemic. Residents are encouraged to make payments when they are able to and work with the city staff for that too. We also want to mention that residents and businesses should be checking the plumbing in and around their house. Sometimes the toilet or the flapper might be stuck, the faucet might have some issue, the showerhead might have a small leak. Any small leaks or any other issues can increase your normal water usage. We do want to make sure that if someone's doing construction, even a road redoing your driveway, you know, that could be taking some water that's being used. And people who installed new pools in their area, they might not be used to putting what they actually utilize in that. But we also want to make sure that people also know with everybody doing home, stay home, or remote learning, But we also want to make sure that people also know with everybody doing home, stay home, or remote learning. Or kids back from college, you know, that also could increase some of your water usage. But oftentimes, residents are not aware of the meter usage period for the current bill. And again, finance is really good about talking about that. We're not really doing in-house inspections per se unless it's really an emergency issue. But we're more than happy to working through it and also visiting a house if we need to. And then a quick tip to detect water loss. It's really a simple test for water meter accuracy. First, a resident may take the water meter reading from their water meter. Then they can take a five or 10 gallon bucket and fill the bucket. They should read the water meter again. The water meter will register the gallons needed to fill the bucket. When reading the water meter there, will leak indicator on the meter. And this will also tell you if there's some other issue that needs to be addressed. But again, we do want to stress, if you have any questions, concerns, or you would like to talk about something. Please contact the Finance Department at 847-394-8500 between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. I do want to mention that future tentative topics at the January Committee meeting. There will be no Economic Development Committee meeting for January. However, Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, January 5th. At 7:00 PM, tentatively, there's only one item to be heard. And it's pertaining to a public hearing in consideration of variance for section. B dash 2C of the City Code, Chapter 122, City of Rolling Meadows zoning code. To reduce the east side yard setback from 10 feet to 2.6 to allow a second. Story addition to the top of an existing foundation in the R3 zoning district. And other relief necessary to accommodate the full second story addition over the existing foundation. This is at 2104 Quell Lane. John Quander is the petitioner. One of the new items that I do want to mention is that there will be a drive-by baby closet drive happening on Friday, December 18th. Between 5:30 and 8:30 PM, 2612 Rowling Road. You can't miss the house because it's highly decorated with lots of lights. But through this area and helpful beginnings. They are hoping for support from the community for donations that are essential to baby areas. I'm reading from their list, but it's called yellow topped M-FMEL, purple topped M-FMEL gentle ease. Zero to three month, 12 month toddler two and toddler three boys' winter clothing. Onesies, onesies inside five for a special need child who is five, diapers size six. Or Walmart or Target gift cards. And then final one that I do want to mention from all of staff, we wish everyone a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season. Happy New Year.
Thank you for that, Manager Crumstock. Then I'll move us on to the October 2020 financials. And for that, I'm going to defer to Finance Director Gallagher.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. In the packet for tonight, and I will review at high level, there's a lot of detail, but we're just going to look at it at high level. Is the results of operations for the City of Rolling Meadows through October 31st, 2020. And this represents through October 30th, 31st, 83% of the fiscal year completed. So this memo really should be read in conjunction with the items that follow the memo. But I think it's important, again, that this is just a snapshot in time. These are unaudited financial statements. This is not intended to be a financial estimate. However, on page eight of the memo, we do provide. The snapshot as set forth in the budget of the estimated ending fund balance for each of the funds. Right now, just overall, when we're looking at all of the funds, we are trending in line. As per stated in the 2021 adopted budget for each fund. For the ending fund balance, and that's in page eight in the memo. So we are still tabulating many items, obviously, in the financials, but right now, this is the October report. This memo does consist of several items I wanted to highlight. One is the fund balance summary sheet as mentioned. The all funds income statement, which will show you all of the funds, revenues and expenses year through October 31st. The cash and investment summary sheet. The general fund revenues. We have a major revenue sources and the changes as of October 31st. And what this one does is a larger spreadsheet that shows you a comparison between 2019 and 2020. So you could see month by month, some of the major revenue changes. And then we have general fund expenditures as of October 31st and our general fund revenue charts. Overall, the general fund as of October 31st is coming in about 4% above budget. Or 87% of the year at $31 million. And the city's expenditures came in approximately $30 million or 85% of the year, which is about 2% above budget. It's important to note that right now, per our estimate through 2020. The estimate that we presented in the 2021 adopted budget shows us ending at expenditures. Coming in higher than revenues at about $400,000 deficit position. Right now, as we're sitting for the general fund through October 31st, we're actually showing better results. For the year through October 31st at about 1.2 with rounding. Better as far as 1.2 million dollars over revenue, revenues over expenditures. Now, a couple of things that we should just explain to that too. We do have revenues that are attributed to the 2019 year. And these revenues are for the major revenues through the general fund, such as sales taxes, income taxes. And so it's important to note that some of these are going to be reversed from 2020. And the revenues that come through for the general fund for through March of 2021 will be added to 2021. So there's obviously some uncertainty as far as revenues received through March of 2021. They could be significantly lower than the ones that we received through March of 2020, but we will just have to see. At this point, our estimates are still trending a little bit better than than budget. I also wanted to mention that overall, in when we look at the larger picture for all of the city's funds, that our capital projects do remain intact. Some were discussed tonight with Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund Committee. Again, the strategy that we've taken is to be able to move swiftly if we need to, to delay anything. Should something need to be moved through the work of our Public Works Department and our Fleet Management Group. In the Public Works Department, if we need to move things, we can. All of our fund balance policies for those funds who have established fund balance policies are in line or in parameters. And even though we have some declines in revenues and there are declines, we do have increases in other revenues, such as local use tax. With internet sales, that's increasing. So it it's at this point, we're making sure that you're keeping informed to the city council and making sure that we're evaluating our needs versus wants. And then also balancing any types of increases in terms of additional staffing requests and report back to council. Again, there's a lot of detail within the memo itself. I did want to share with you on page three of the memo, again, the the budget amendments that were were completed for the year. Just to highlight again, and a credit to the mayor and the city council. For their commitment to the Business Assistance Program, the Temporary Family Assistance Program. And the grant to the South Asian Army, helping Rolling Meadows residents with COVID-19 relief. And I think that's important to note as we're, we've had a tough and challenging year, but the more that we can help residents, the better off we all are. I wanted to move along too through the memo itself. Again, a lot of detail in the memo, but for the utilities fund, I think it's important because it is one of our largest operating funds as well. Is that we're about 6% below budget for the revenue year to date. And we do have some folks on payment plans. At this point, revenues are trending a little bit lower, about 19% below budget, which we knew because of the fact that we've had some deferrals in capital. But some projects are being completed towards the year end. And finally, there is some economic data that we've included for unemployment data. And just to end also at the cash and investment summary, showing our strong cash position overall for the whole city. With about 32% sitting in the general fund. With that, I just wanted to close with a big thank you to the city council, the mayor. And all to the departments as well, wishing you a happy, safe, and healthy holiday season and happy new year.
Thank you, Finance Director Gallagher. We wish the same for you as well. Thank you for sharing that with us. Moving on to the third item for November 2020, new business. Throwing it back to you, Manager Crumstock.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We obviously have six new businesses that moved in in November. Do want to highlight two of them, Burrito Porina Mexicana. That's the old Knicks, obviously at 2101 Plum Grove Road. It's a Mexican food restaurant. They have other locations. We welcome them to the area. And the other one that I want to mention is Nakow Prints LLC at 4007 Algonquin Road. It's right by the stadium and Grand Secora. Off of Algonquin Road. Tapero Printing Promo Products, and we do welcome all six new businesses, but I just wanted to highlight those two.
Thank you for those highlights there, Manager Crumstock. If we're finished with that, we'll move on to the next item. On the agenda, closing it out with matters not on the agenda. Are there matters not on the agenda? Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wouldn't unmute. So wanted to circle back on the email from the resident for or about the EDC. The Economic Development Committee. We have canceled the meetings for December, January, and will revisit for February. We did have resignation of one of the committee members just the last couple of weeks. And circling back with the email, the resident has stated that. They felt that the Economic Development Committee had lost sight of the purpose of the committee as a whole. And that that we needed to kind of get back on track. I'm kind of paraphrasing and summarizing, of course. That getting back on track on and getting more of economic development in the city. Needed to be at the core of what our committee needed to do, which I couldn't agree more with. With that being said, we we've met several times over the last several months. And we've tried to create our goals moving forward for 2021. We did elect a new chairperson. But it is amongst the committee that there's been some contention between the committee and other members of staff. And so it's become a challenge. And most recently, like I said, we've had committee member resign and potentially some other committee members. Wanting to resign as well due to the contention between the stifling from staff and the committee. And so with myself and Alderman O'Brien being the liaison between council and the committee. I feel that it's our duty to kind of bring this back to council. And to ensure that the integrity of this committee is in place. And that our volunteers on these various committees, whether it be EDC, planning, zoning, and any of our other committees. Remains intact because these are residents and we want to retain them as our volunteers. Because they're the core of what makes our councils work and our committees. And that's why we're in the positions that we're in. So moving forward, I would really like to move forward with staff. In these committees and and hope that we can retain our appointed members to these committees. And hope that things do get better. And I do appreciate that resident reaching out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, for that report. And I do think it'll be very important that the committee identify where those obstacles and obstructions are. In order to remediate them and then hopefully move beyond those frictions and on to progress. With that, Alderman, okay, it doesn't look like there's any further matters not on the agenda. Alderman Sessi.
Yes, now that we've gone through our meeting today, I got two things I need to, I wanted to mention. First off, I want to welcome our new councilwoman. The, I think I can speak for some of the other councilmen. Has our votes had nothing to do with her as a person. So I want to welcome, welcome her, and I look forward to her contributions. The second thing. As liaison with the library, I want to remind people that the library is open. And has been open since since June. On partial hours, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:00. Tuesday and Thursday, 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00. They've had over 2100 or 21,000 patrons visit the library since June 1st. And we initially were one of the only libraries in the area that was actually opened and came up with a way to. Still service our patrons. So I want to thank the library and their staff for all their hard work during the COVID. Pandemic and the their continued work. So I just wanted to shout that out. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sessi. Any other matters not on the agenda this evening? If not, then I want to give my thanks to everybody for the. Fortitude that they've all demonstrated dealing with remote meetings, pandemics. Trying to invest more time than anyone would have thought necessary on a volunteer committee, such as the city council in this year. It's been challenging but exciting. And so with that, I just want to wish everybody safe and happy holidays with hopefully prosperous new year. And we can turn the page on some things. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Alderman Sanica for the first and Alderman Diastis for the second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Sessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Merry Christmas, yes.
Merry Christmas.
Six in favor and then opposed. This meeting is over. Everyone have happy holidays and happy new year. Good evening. Bye.
Good night.